We're going to go ahead and move on to our one o'clock, six point eight. Sitting as the Board of Directors, Lake County Watershed Protection District, Consider to A, WAVE County Code Chapter Two, Section Two dash thirty-eight, two point two-two, Due to the unique nature of services, and B, Awarded Clear Lake LG Sonic Buoy Harmful Algal Bloom Mitigation Project In the amount of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents, And authorize the Chair to sign in the Water Resources Director to execute the contract Between the Watershed Protection District and LG Sonic. All right, Dr. Upadhyay.
Yeah, so I will give an executive summary and then I can address any questions That might we have, and then we also have The LG Sonic representative online, so if we have any question for him, he can address as well.
All right.
The Clear Lake LG Sonic Buoy Harmful Algae Bloom Mitigation Project is designed To reduce the harmful impacts of blue-green algae and cyanobacteria, While lowering processing cost for drinking water purveyors. Clear Lake, one of the oldest lake in North America, faces annual contamination from harmful algae blooms, Fueled by phosphorus, nitrogen, and rising temperatures. With sixty percent of Lake County relying on Clear Lake for drinking water, Addressing harmful algae bloom is a priority. This twenty-four month project involves the purchase, installation, and operation of fourteen Algal mitigation buoys from LG Sonic, Incorporating interactive algae control software. The system utilizes ultrasonic wave to inhibit algae growth By reducing buoyancy and nutrient access, Preventing toxic blooms without harming aquatic life. The Lake County Water Resources Department Will oversee implementation and long-term maintenance in partnership with LG Sonic. Grant funding for this project was made available in 2024, And due to the unique nature of the technology, The project qualifies as a sole source procurement based on the original LG Sonic proposal. The project will be funded through Budget Unit Eight One Oh Nine, And reimbursed by eleven twenty. So Eight One Oh Nine is the Watershed Protection District main account, And then eleven twenty is the admin account. The anticipated construction cost was about a million dollar, With LG Sonic deploying ten MPC Buoy Light Units And four MPC Buoy Pro Units, Along with staff training for a contracted cost of nine hundred and twenty-one Thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents, With sixty thousand to cover the staff time For a total amount of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents.
All right, did you have anything, Supervisor Sabatia?
Yes, I appreciated the fact that we added this to our mitigation CDBG grant. This was approved, as well as I think the other projects that were along with this. Excited when we got awarded by the state, our state contract, And happy to be in this position today where we can move forward and Hope to see some impacts to our lake, And if the impact is what we hope and anticipate to see, That maybe this is something we can look at further on down the road to expand. Because I know this is not the only area in our lake that does experience massive algal blooms.
Supervisor Pyska, and then Vice Chair.
Well, I'm glad that I'm glad that we were able to get grant funding for this. I have some concerns about the overall plan that are not in the contract yet, And I'd really like to see that filled out before we move forward. You know, this is a, and I did send the questions to staff earlier to look at. You know, this is gonna, I think there's impacts to navigation on the lake, Safety concerns, I don't know where the county falls for risk. I know we have our sheriff here to see If he has any input or if he's been part of the discussion. I think educating the public is a big piece of this too. I'm very concerned about vandalism and tampering with them and damage, And what the plan is for replacement and where that funding comes from. And then the partners that are listed, potential partners that are listed on the end, I'm not sure if there's a cohesive plan for them to be involved yet. So, you know, I don't want to get off on running with this project Without really clearly thinking through a lot of these things, like, You know, I just imagine, I know people are gonna like run into them and jump on them and jump off of them, And I have seen people rip solar panels off road signs in Cobb. So, you know, these are the type of realities I think we're gonna run into. And so I'd just like to see a better developed plan and who's gonna be running plane on this? Is this Water Resources? Is this gonna be Marine Patrol? How is this all gonna work? So these are all the questions that, you know, I still have from our last conversation. I'll just leave it at that.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I have some questions. I'll comment first that I think this is It's great that we're looking at the technology and trying to bring in these projects That are gonna mitigate some of these problems in the lake. It's critical that we continue to work on these things for, You know, to keep the lake attractive for recreation and also the water usage That we draw out of there. My first question, I know the staff report and you mentioned it, That there's no harm to aquatic life. Does that also account for like water fowl and other bird life that's on the lake? Do we know anything about that?
Yeah, I will refer it to LG Sonic representative. Because I think the information we have received was like there is no adverse impact. And I think that's what they presented in their last update or presentation to the board.
Okay, this is the first time I've seen or I'm learning about this, you know, with this coming on this agenda, so.
If he would like to, is he a presenter? Or, okay.
DJ DMC, LG Sonic.
There you go.
Thank you, Board Member. There is no known concern to wildlife, including bird habitat. And to our usual experience, we actually find that the birds like to congregate on the buoys. And the enhanced water quality tends to enhance their ability to hunt And to use the fish resources to their advantage. And another advantage of the buoys too is we definitely see a shift towards Green algae dominance, which is natural to Clear Lake, Which we expect to also provide some positive impacts to the Clear Lake Hitch.
Okay, thank you. Another question I had was, I understand in reading the contract That we're gonna have to facilitate the appropriate boat for installation. Do we have that, or we're gonna have to hire a barge contractor? And is that additional cost that's not in the contract?
Yeah, I think we did have a discussion with them. So I think we have to, we discussed saying depending on the size of the buoy itself, The boat we have might not work, we need something bigger. But I think what came out from the discussion is like we can work it out Once we have like the plan to go ahead with this project. Yeah, because I think there are the local port rental or something which we can do. Because deploying all this, they will take like three days or two to three days. So we can rent a boat for that period of time.
So we'd be looking to rent a boat and have our own staff do the installation?
So our staff would be present during all that time to help out. And I think our plan is also to reach out to City of Clear Lake If they can also have one or two of their staff be there. But right now, we are just waiting whether we are going ahead with this project or not. But we did have discussion lines.
Okay. Another question I had that I didn't see outlined was, Do these buoys have like lights on them for if boats are navigating at night?
Yes, so these comes with their own lights, But we will also install like the navigational buoys, hazard buoys around them. So that this would be like an additional round of safety. And also we talked about saying a reflective strip attached to them. So somebody coming at the nighttime, they can, like how we have in the cars or vehicles, That kind of, so it can be more visible at nighttime as well.
Okay, and then the other main concern I had was If the sheriff had been involved in any discussions about the planning Of where these were gonna be located, being that he runs our Marine Patrol. So I was wanting to find out if we'd had any discussions there. I don't believe we have, but I think that's important as well To work into the installation planning or navigation plan For the public regarding these buoys.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, like moving forward, probably we can include them in our discussion. But for the specific location, because they are going on the east side of the lake, So that location is very specific, because we want to address on that particular area, Because that's more affected. As far as they go, I don't think there is like a specific pinpoint location kind of thing. We can move them around a little bit here and there. But yeah, I think that even the one which you see on the map is kind of very broad. So as far as they overlap each other, I think that's what we are looking at. So no areas left in between.
So, because there's the map in the presentation and then there's the map that's on its own, so.
Yeah, I looked at both of those maps and.
Which one are we looking at for the plan?
And I was also curious if that.
During this, or you wanted?
This one is the map on the.
I was gonna let him finish.
Okay, okay.
So these are like the locations.
That's the one, not the other one that's in the presentation?
I think they are the same. This is the zoomed in version.
Yeah, they were similar. And then I guess I wasn't sure if this area of the lake, I know it's around the Clear Lake Highlands, Is this all within a five mile or a restricted speed area? Or some of this outside of that?
So the restricted speed is very close to lakeshore, like when you come closer. But I think there would be areas in between here where the speed would be higher. But we do plan to, like when we install these, put like Facebook ads Or the public boat launches, we will have a map of these things posted on the launch site. So people can look at it beforehand. And because Water Resources is also in charge for the lake navigation, So we can also put out like public awareness or other kind of thing where how we inform public, Because we do have RAM monitors on the ground. So that can be part of our information to get the information out.
Okay. I believe those were my questions at this point.
Yeah, Maria, did you have something to add to that? I seen that you had your hand up, and then Supervisor Sabatia, once she's finished, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. Just letting you know that CEQA review is actually ongoing. We do have a few requests for information to the Water Resources Department That we're still waiting to hear back on. We are hopeful for an exemption, but we have not had the opportunity to make that determination yet. Thank you. So I would appreciate it if this approval could be, if the Board intends to approve it, That it be done contingent on completion of CEQA. Thanks.
Supervisor Sabatia.
And on that last comment, rightfully so, that is part of the process. I had some similar questions. My first question was its impact to wildlife. I could only base it on the information that we've received, But I know that's a sensitive subject for us overall in a freshwater lake. And we want to make sure that there's not gonna be any kind of adverse impact To whether it's the hitch or any of the other wildlife that it interacts with. We definitely talked about safety a whole lot when it came to boater safety. That we wanted to make sure there was lights, there's already lights. We talked about putting sticker of property of the county of lake, And obviously a conversation with the sheriff, because I know that LG Sonic said that in other areas, They do put stickers that are more alerting to boaters by showing the sheriff insignia Please don't touch or something like that. Obviously, we would need to get approval to do so. But those things can easily be done and added on to it. Boats already navigate around some of the buoys that do exist, Especially in that southern part of the lake. There is one in between. I want to say it's close to Monitor Point, maybe a little further out towards Lily Cove and Jago Bay. There's a light, that beacon that flashes all day long, all night long. I don't believe that is a continuous issue. It may have been an issue once or every so often. But it's not something that I've heard since been in this board that that has been an issue. And I think people navigate around those types of barriers quite easily because it's so visible. As far as people vandalizing, I don't know that we have the ability to ever control crazy attitudes and behaviors. And that from my understanding of LG Sonic and their experience In other recreational lakes where these things exist, There has been very little to no vandalism, again with the stickers and the appropriate signage and everything else. Is it possible? Yes, we do have, we got a list of all the items on the buoy That are, have warranties on it. So I can't specifically speak to that. Maybe LG Sonic might be able to speak better to that. And as far as the maintenance of it, the way it will be deployed, At least in the conversations we've had thus far, it would be at Thompson Harbor. It would be built right there and then at Thompson Harbor. And so there would be the ability for the training of how these devices are put together. And as we watch and take part in putting it together in the first place, The buoys will be attached to a boat, which will then be dragged out, Because it's a floating device, to its location, set up with an anchor, And then decided that this is the location. As Director Upadhyay had mentioned, it's easy to move these things around if we need to. There is an anchor, a very heavy weight attached to it, so it's not easy for anyone to just move it around. But if we find that it's not giving us the leverage that we're looking for to do the impact, Have the impact on the algae, like we are hoping, That we can move it around slightly just to make sure that we have it in the right spots. And that may be the first couple of steps of finding exactly where things need to be situated In order to have the best impact. There are some logistics that I didn't want to get into in the first place Before getting approval for this contract, Such as sitting down with the City of Clear Lake and getting a plan of where do these pallets, There's fourteen pallets, I believe, that are supposed to be delivered to us. Where do we place them and position them so that it's most easily accessible And decrease the potential of logistical issues when it becomes the day of putting these together And then deploying them out in the lake. And so I didn't want to take up any more time than we needed until this contract was approved. And again, I have no issues with approving this contract with the condition of we need to meet CEQA. And I hope that helps.
That was the only thing I was concerned about. I sponsored this with you, so. We didn't want to duly run LG Sonic with hypolimnetics, so.
And I hope both can create the outcomes that we're looking for.
Right.
So I don't know the timelines on this CEQA, but I'm gonna assume that We don't have a concern with the timeline right now with when the grant has to be, start being used, or?
And if I may, I apologize, but I believe you said two years, but it's a three-year contract, Mainly to check in and make sure that it's working the way that it should. And also the contract fulfills the cost of the data collection that we have. As you see, within the contract, there is a situation Where if we feel we're not getting the adequate outcomes, that we can return some of the buoys, But still keeping the four that collect data, because there's a belief in the department, There's a belief in my personal opinion, that collecting data is vital to better understanding our lake And better managing our lake. Because we don't want buoys that are out there if they're not going to be doing the, Having the impact on algae that we're hoping it has. And I'm glad that we were able to find state funding rather than our own funding To be able to take this risk of paying for this contract.
Yeah, so with, I mean, I'm just really concerned because they're so expensive. And we did get grant funding because I really didn't want this to be generally, general fund covered. And so if there's damage, is that gonna be covered by warranty? Or do we have to replace these? I mean, this is potentially a very expensive project to have to repair or replace If things happen to it. And so I'm not really comfortable yet of where that funding is coming from Or if that's gonna be covered by warranty. It's likely not if it's vandalized.
And I believe that we have LG Sonic here who might be able to better respond, unless Dr. Upadhyay, you?
Yeah, so I do have like a warranty list kind of thing, like where which item is covered up to, Like how many years. But I think for vandalism, damage, or any other type of destruction which is done intensely, Probably it won't be covered in the warranty, I believe. And I will have probably them LG Sonic speak for itself. But I think because it's not like, it's covering only a small section of the lake, And I think it would be a good experiment to see whether these things work in Clear Lake or not. Even if like out of fourteen, a couple of them get destroyed or not work as intentional, We will still have a good data on like at least two, three years, working with them, saying whether they work or not. And then that's where probably we can decide whether we want to go ahead with some project like this in future. Because that complements like the other projects going on in the Clear Lake. And we will know for sure that whether we want to go this route or not. But yeah, it would be expensive to fix those, but that's with anything. Like I mean, that should not stop us from going forward for the project.
Supervisor.
Yeah, and I'll wrap it up. I would just, I agree with the CEQA contingent on that. And I'd feel more comfortable if we were, you know, assured that we're gonna consult with the Marine Patrol And get them involved in any navigational plans To include assisting with the public education campaign regarding this project. So the public knows that, you know, is as aware as we can make them about what's out there in the lake.
Supervisor Sabatia.
And just as a response, happy to have those conversations And make sure that we prepare the public and prepare all other departments That may engage with the buoys in some way, shape, or form.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment about this item?
Good afternoon, Chair Crandall, Board Members. Alan Flora, City Manager, Clear Lake. Just appreciate this item being in front of you today. Appreciate Chair Crandall and Supervisor Sabatia bringing this forward quite some time ago. And we'd really like to see this project tried out, making an impact hopefully on the water quality In the Clear Lake area. I understand that there was a direction to try to get grant funding, fortunately. Supervisor Sabatia, I know in particular, put an enormous amount of work into making sure that the funding was available for this. So I don't think it's a surprise to anyone here That along the shoreline of the city of Clear Lake is one of the most negatively impacted Areas of the lake when we have algae problems. And certainly impacting the largest concentration of population around the lake negatively. So look forward to moving forward with approving the contract and putting this project into play. And hopefully we see some real positive impacts from it. So thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure and give credit where credit is due. Thank you to Terry Logsdon for putting all of the effort in the mitigation grant process. Truly appreciate your work. I know that there was some pushback from the state at one point. Probably like most other grants, but you had to provide some extra information In order to get it through the finish line and truly appreciate the efforts.
Yep, thank you, Terry.
Russ Kramer, Mayor, City of Clear Lake. Again, thank you Supervisors for this opportunity to talk, Reiterate what City Manager Flora has said. The city of Clear Lake and that edge of the lower end of the lake gets hit Especially hard with this, with the blue algae And the buildup that it causes along our shoreline just because of the currents coming our way. Just to give you some perspective from the oldest guy in the room, When I grew up in the fifties and sixties, never had the kind of buildup of stuff that we get now. I liken it, I think, to a number of things, possibly climate change, the heated, warmer summers, whatever. But we also had a lot more boat traffic back then when, And I think that stirring the lake up might have had some impact on our lower end. I don't know, that's a non-scientific explanation, but I think it's probably, it's as good as any. Again, Supervisor Sabatia has put a tremendous amount of work into this And I appreciate Chairman Crandall's co-sponsoring this with him. I understand your concern Supervisor Pyska, Although please keep in mind that this is, the whole part reason behind this Is to be a pilot program, to test different things, to see what works the best. And maybe the one, the other one that you're also testing will work as well. We won't know that until we try it, and we're lucky enough to be able to try it with grant funds. Supervisor, Vice Chair Rasmussen, again, I appreciate all of your comments. I think it's wise to be concerned, to ask these questions. I do agree that the CEQA process should be part of this. Hopefully it won't hold it up. I'm getting excited now that it's within, what, two or three months of being able to be put in the lake. So again, I would appreciate your voting to move forward on this today. Thank you.
Yep, you're up.
Good afternoon, Board. Sheriff Bingham, Lake County Sheriff's Office. I'm, support the idea. I think it's a great idea. Thinking we can do, anything we can do to improve our lake is a, we should be looking at that. Tourism, fishing, everything it brings to Lake County, I think it's a great idea. From my perspective though, public safety being my responsibility and paramount on the lake, Moving forward, I do have some concerns with these buoys being on the lake, Especially in a narrow navigable waterway like that. As you guys well know, there is no speed limit on the lake. It is what is appropriate for conditions. So that being said, a lot of people have different opinions on what is appropriate for conditions That's concerned on that lake. So, you know, a normal buoy like we talk about, little rubber buoy, you know, three foot, four foot tall, If a boat hits that, we're not talking about a catastrophic event. But you talk about something like one of these Sonic buoys that's eight foot by seven foot, Two point eight feet, I believe, above the waterline, weighing four hundred and forty-one pounds. That could be a catastrophic event if a boat strikes at any type of speed. So again, I'm in support of the idea. I'm in support of anything we can do to improve the quality of the water. I just ask that moving forward, that we have an opportunity through my Marine Patrol And through the Sheriff's Office, I am by no means a water expert or navigation water expert, But I would like to have that studied so that if there's any mitigatable factors we can do for public safety, We can implement those, including possibly looking at in that narrow channel in that area, Reducing speed limits in that area. The Board of Supervisors could pass an ordinance that in that general area from a certain point forward, That the speed limit is twenty miles an hour, day or night. That's a huge safety reduction in that area, especially with those buoys, because we're putting fourteen of them out there. And then those of you that have been on the water, you know that you have the entire city shoreline behind you with all the lights. It's very easy to mistake a buoy light for a shoreline light. easy to mistake a buoy light for a shoreline light. Those are, again, safety hazard, especially at night in the adverse conditions that we get in this lake, which is pretty unique. I know you guys have been on that lake or been around it where we get a wind event and all of a sudden you got four to foot, four to five foot waves with white caps on them. You're not going to see a buoy that's only 2.8 feet tall. So those are my concerns from a public safety side. So as I said, I support the idea of doing whatever we can to improve the lake. But just moving forward, I would like the opportunity through the Sheriff's Office and my Marine Patrol to study these, to look at them, and look at what we can do to reduce that public safety on the lake. Thank you.
Any other comments on Zoom? All right, Betsy, if you can unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board. Betsy Conner, Upper Lake. Three comments on this. Now, as far as the CEQA process is concerned, I'm wondering if there's any possibility of having a categorical exemption or so we can streamline this approval process. We've been through this for three years now, and we know that we need to get those in place before the high heat hits the lake and starts producing excess algae. Mr. Sabatier, Mr. Sabatier, you know what I'm talking about here. We've tried to get this through, tried to get this through, to at the last minute to ask the Sheriff's to consider the safety requirements. Okay, fine. But I would urge you to be really as collaborative as possible. This is the best option we have to experiment with this. The other comment I would make in regard to the location is, yes, that's where all the water settles in the summertime. There's little circulation. You get that buildup of particulate matter and water quality problems for the systems that draw the water out of the lake. But the city of Clear Lake has a responsibility for implementing its own drainage master plan, which has been on the books since 1988, I think. The city was incorporated in 1980. They still have 49 miles of heavily trafficked unpaved roads that drain into the lake, and they have a share of the contribution to that nutrient load. So thank you very much. I urge you to do this. We want to get this done and get it going before it gets too warm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom? All right, I'll close by input and bring it back to the board. Any other comments or Vice Chair?
Yeah, do, as far as, once we sign the contract, what's the timeline to get these things here shipped down to Clear Lake?
I think it was about a month, like within a month, like once we give them a go. But I think that's what I remember from our discussion, but let LG Sonic representative talk a little more on that.
That's correct. We can also accelerate the timeline if we have the opportunity to do so.
Okay. And again, I just want to comment on, for me, the, I'm ready, you know, I'm okay supporting it, but I really want the Sheriff's Marine Patrol to review this before these are put in place. I think that's a critical piece of the public safety. I don't want to speak for the Sheriff's workload, but if it takes a month to get here, we're not in the busy summer season yet. I don't know if the Sheriff can answer, is this something that your Marine staff could start looking at like tomorrow or start communicating with Water Resources?
I know. Go ahead, Sheriff.
Simple answer, yes. If the board approves this and moves forward, that I will speak to my Marine Patrol, have them coordinate with Water Resources, and we'll begin looking at it. And I would anticipate that we would have to reach out to other experts to talk about different things for navigable, you know what I'm trying to say, waterways and safety, and look at some best practices and what we can do. But within a month, we could probably have a recommendation to Water Resources and to the board as to what actions we would take to make it as safe as possible.
And I think internally, like we did had a brief discussion on saying how are we gonna like implement whether a hazard buoys or something around it. So I think Sheriff's Office input on that would be really helpful to design that thing or to come up with something which is more visible, especially in high wave kind of situation.
Okay. Maria, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to make sure that before we start like doing a timeline in our heads right now, we have not performed CEQA. We would definitely always try to keep it at the lowest level if we have a categorical exemption that's appropriate. What we also do as part of our process is send that out for review because there are five different ways that a anticipated categorical exemption may not apply. One of those is tribal resources. And so we will send that notice out, giving the tribes about 14 days to reply to see if they have a good reason why it does not qualify for a categorical exemption. Additionally, one of the other questions that we have waiting at Water Resources is who's performing the NEPA. Since we have federal funding dollars going into this project, NEPA is also required. So I just, we will proceed with all due haste, knowing that we have a timeline that is urgent. However, we will proceed with all due diligence as well. Thank you.
Thank you for stating that, Maria. That was going to be one of my comments, so appreciate it. I don't know if you were first or?
No, it's good.
Well, who's taking the lead on NEPA?
Terry, I know I've seen you shaking your head, but I don't know. No. Dr. Upadhyay, do you know who's taking?
I think we did had a brief discussion with the funding agency regarding that. I'm not 100% sure like what our next step was on that, but we did start a discussion on that, and we will follow up on whatever is required.
Thank you.
Necessary, yeah.
So the list of contingencies is getting a little bit longer now. Did you have your hand up?
Go ahead, Cia.
Hi, yes. Lloyd does have a recommended motion that should cover most of them. Then you would, of course, include Marine, the Marine Patrol as part of it, too. Just.
Well, I also, you know, with CEQA, NEPA, the navigation plan designed by the Sheriff, and then if we have to make any ordinance change for speed safety in the area, and then, you know, I really want to have an identified funding source for repairs if there's vandalism. If we never have to use it, it's fine. But I don't want to have to come back for general fund dollars, you know, every time there could be an issue. So those are, those are my concerns.
Any other comments? All right.
Happy to hear what.
Lloyd?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
So for at least some of those items, your board has the option of providing direction of staff. It sounds like some of these items may consist of a certain degree of coordination between departments. Talk about Marine Patrol and the Sheriff's Office side of things and Water Resources, trying to come up with a plan. So that can be, that can be done via board consensus to direct staff, primarily Water Resources, to work on those, work on those aspects that may be tied, that may tie in with potential or possible changes to the ordinance. So that would be part of the direction of staff. The environmental review, which would cover CEQA and NEPA, and also pursuant to the recommendation of Director Turner, that can be made a part as a condition, as a, as a condition to your board's approval to this. And it would be consistent with the proposed agreement under Exhibit A wherein both the contractor, well, the contractor would be obligated under Section 1.4 of Exhibit A to obtain all necessary permits and approvals for an installation of the buoys, ensuring full compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. You have a similar provision there for the, under the county responsibilities under that exhibit under Section 3. So the motion, you know, with your board's approval, the condition, the contingency or the condition under that approval of the contract under the motion would be to obtain the environmental reviews and approvals in accordance with, with any environmental reviews and approvals in accordance with Exhibit A of the contract.
But then, you know, prior to installation, have the navigation plan, any ordinance change and reserve account?
So your board has that option to either plug that in, in the, in the contract itself, or provide it via direction of staff, via direction of Water Resources. The only reason why I separated the environmental review aspect of it as a condition, as a condition under the proposed contract versus the other items is because the environmental review is actually addressed already in Exhibit A, whereas these other items seem to be new. If it is the sort of thing that can be provided via direction of staff to coordinate with other departments to address these other issues, the navigation plan, for example, the ordinance, then your board has that option to give that by direction of staff, or in the alternative, put that as a requirement or as a provision in the contract.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And just to get a better idea of navigation plan, I think navigation plan we talked about includes signage at the docks, conversations with the ramp monitors, and I would say conversations and input from the Sheriff, not the Sheriff creating a navigation plan because I don't want to task our Sheriff with doing something that maybe he reviews it and finds nothing. I would say it's in collaboration with. I don't want to task something that we're not quite sure what we're asking for, other than we want to make sure it's safe. We want to make sure that the public is aware and for, to request Water Resources to engage both with our Sheriff in order to get that accomplished, and also to coordinate with the city of Clear Lake for any other measures that may be needed, including the logistics of the deployment.
I just want to ask the Sheriff, is that adequate?
Well, he's shaking his head, but.
He's nodding his.
He's nodding his head, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. So yeah, just, so those are the, they're separate, one's direction, one's implemented. And you're okay with some of that or all of it or?
I'm good with that. I think that we do need to make sure it's safe. And I have no doubt that we can make that happen. I think that there's already experience in other lakes utilizing these types of buoys. That's what we've been having discussions about this whole time. And if we need to implement more, then let's work and figure out what that is and implement more. And I am ready to make a motion.
All right. And just real quick, Dr. Upadhyay, just with respect to what Director Turner had mentioned about one of the reasons that could, you know, have CEQA, you know, inside it is the tribes, of course. And I'm just going to say, I know that we've been working in collaboration with tribes, and I'd love to keep that momentum going. We're getting ahead of these things upstream more. If we can keep doing that, it's very important. So I do know that there are situations where tribes, there are artifacts because the tribes usually give back. They're either, if it's like a regalia or something to the lake. So at times, there may be something like that pops up or whatever. At times, I know that Supervisor Brown at one time had reached out to me and said someone had like been fishing and pulled out like a belt or something like that. So there's situations like that. So that's, that's one of the things that could happen, but usually they're just supposed to be in the water still. So like, and because it's not like how we remove dirt or anything like that, it's not the same. But at the same time, if something's found, they usually just want it put back into the water. But having the professionals understand or be a part of it is very important. And again, I'm appreciative of a lot of the meetings that we've been having lately so we can kind of get that under control and whatnot. So I just wanted to state that. So ready for action when you are?
Mr. Chair, I'll do it in two separate motions. Move to waive the county code, Chapter 2, Section 2-38.2, Part 2, due to the unique nature of services.
I'll second.
That's why I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
And then Part B, I move to award the Clear Lake LG Sonic Buoy Harmful Algal Bloom Mitigation Project in the amount of $921,407.12, and authorize the Chair to sign and the Water Resources Director to execute the contract between the Watershed Protection District and LG Sonic with conditions of CEQA and NEPA, and direction to collaborate and meet with our Sheriff Department for Marine Patrol input and with the city of Clear Lake for logistical input and also any other further information.
Revenue or some funding set aside?
There's $60,000 set aside already from the grant we received.
Okay.
Yes, and just for purposes of the motion language, I think per the request of Director Turner, that the reference to CEQA and NEPA, just to make it more general, make the approval under this motion be contingent in obtaining any applicable environmental reviews and approvals in accordance with Exhibit A of the contract. And leave just for further clarification under that motion, this contract here, the authorization for signature would lie with the Chair of the Board of Supervisors to sign the proposed agreement.
As amended.
Okay, and just to be clear, I guess Supervisor Sabatier also included what the consensus part of it was. So, which I believe we're separating that out to be consensus.
Well, that can be a part of the motion.
Then I'll second with, with that amended motion.
All right, a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0-0.